Okay, it is 6:30. And I'm calling this meeting of Manchester by the Sea Select Board to Order. Jeff.
Yeah.
Brian.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes.
And it's here and John.
Is here.
Okay, the first order of business is public comment on non agenda items. I see a hand. Please stand, identify yourself, give your address.
Yes, my name is Jim Starkey at 13 Tuxport Road.
Thank you.
All right, how long do I have?
Oh, please make it as short as you can.
I'll make it as short as possible. On January 6th of this year, this committee passed the Professional Maureen Program, which is the comprehensive, fair, and transparent program that allowed people on the waiting list to rent moorings at boatyards that had previously been strictly illegal. Since that time, virtually every element of that program has been violated seriously. The most important element was that the only people eligible to rent moorings were people bona fide members of the, on the waiting list who'd been there for at least one year. The Harbor Masters assigned 12 people to rental moorings, of which only three were actually on the waiting list. Nine were not, and that is a strict violation. Secondly, it was supposed to be transparent, which means that first, it required that the Harbor Master list the same information about people on the rental list as regular moorings. He has not done that. He published names, but he did not publish boat names. You cannot possibly tell who has a rental mooring and who does not. Third, there is a requirement that every boat on the mooring permit, the rental mooring program, have a distinctive mooring sticker on their transom. I would now look today, the 12 boats on the rental moorings, only three have any sort of waterway sticker, and none of them are visible from six feet away, be able to tell whether they're a rental mooring sticker or not. I don't know what they are. I know they're not distinctive. I have pictures of them, and you cannot tell what they are. The next problem, deeper than this, is the existence of most of those moorings. In 2024, the Harbor Master, without any authorization whatsoever, gave Manchester Marine 10 extra mooring permits that they could use for rental, and he added another two this year. There is no basis in our mooring regulations for that, and the state D E P rules require that the Harbor Master assign moorings off of a written policy, which does not allow that. The, to make things a little bit worse, you might wonder what the Harbor Committee has to say about this, and the answer to that is nothing. The Harbor Master sent them a communication saying that he was being investigated and suggested that they not take this up, and the Harbor Committee has an official policy of not discussing the Manchester Marine moorings. This is a mess. This can't be resolved tonight, obviously. This needs some attention, serious attention. What is happening in the harbor is not what was approved by this committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments here or online?
Yeah, I actually had something to.
Yes.
Um, so not sure if this is a non agenda item or related to the action items, but we've had some conversations with the residents on Ocean Street, and we used to have an action item related to that, you know, coming up, the options. I, I've heard that the grant we applied for most recently, we were denied, so I think the neighborhood would like to get together with Tony to discuss what we are going to do with $100,000 that was approved at town meeting, if we could get that moving, the residents would appreciate it.
Okay, so you'd like to have that put on the agenda items?
Yes, yeah, and I think just the action is, and I think for us, a meeting with Tony and the residents.
Okay, first.
First, but I, I think we should track it on our action item list so we don't forget about it, if that's okay.
If I can just add to that, I've spoken with one resident there, I think it would be, and, and I've spoken with our D P W superintendent, Sue, I, I think we have a list of neighbors in the area from past grant application, you know, efforts, but it would be really helpful, you know, if any residents in that neighborhood are watching tonight, if you could reach out to my office so that we can put together at least like an email contact list so that we can organize, you know, those neighborhood meetings in the most efficient way possible.
I, I think that's terrific. We, I think we can start with the list we have and then, you know, maybe expand upon that.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? There is no chairman's report. This meeting is being recorded, forgot that. Are there any other things that we need to track on our action list? Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the Singing Beach Ocean Rescue and the recognition for John Carlson and Jay Seymour, and I think you are preparing to speak to that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Sharon Marshall, Director of Parks and Rec. I know I've already reached out to you guys through email, but just to give anyone else a recap, I'll try to be brief, but I would like to recognize two residents, J C Moore and John Carlson, as well as my staff, Hadley, Undus, and Head Lifeguard, and Owen Doyle over there, just a beach manager. And the two residents are risked their lives on Sunday, August 25th, to save two swimmers, for one swimmer I'm going to let you guys speak to, that were in distress on Singing Beach. And on the surface, it, it was almost a routine call, swimmer in distress, Head Lifeguard had these stabilized the person on the beach, the police with the A T V were right there, brought the victim up to the circle where there was an waiting ambulance who checked him out, and they refused to go. So, you know, the short story is swimmer in distress, we probably all saw it on Facebook, Fire Department posted it, swimmer in distress, refused care. That's it, end of story. Everything went exactly how it's supposed to, brought our emergency response. Then, as the story behind the story started to evolve, I learned a lot more. I learned about the two residents, John and Jay, not really trying enough to get emotional, who separately were on the beach with their families, and they heard the distress calls coming from the water and did not hesitate, but ran in. Say there was a third man who we're not sure who it was, still remains unidentified, that also was a big help, but the two men went right into the water during very hazardous conditions at the time. Very good swimmers, and it was hazardous for them too, and together they saved at least one of the two teenagers, and the third person saved the other. Once hearing this stories, it really became apparent to me that it was a routine emergency response, but more of a story of, you guys don't want to hear, but heroism and selflessness by the two men. With the knowledge I now have, I can see that this went from a routine emergency response to a near tragedy for the entire community. Story very easily could have gone another way, and we'd be meeting to discuss healing as a community. And thought that is not what we're here for. We are giving public recognition and thanks instead. There are really no words strong enough to fully express the depth of my gratitude. What you did was more than an act of courage, it was an act of compassion and selflessness. John Carlson, J C Moore, Hadley, and Owen, thank you very much for your bravery, thank you for your quick thinking, thank you for being there when it mattered more than anything, and what you did will not be forgotten. And I'm going to give the gentlemen a chance to speak because they know the story as I do, and it's a great opportunity to really get across to the public about water safety awareness. Thank you.
What's that? What are we supposed to do here?
Well, you know what, it sounds like you kind of started first, so maybe if you want to tell a little bit of your story, just to make people a little bit aware of.
Yeah, and I, I think that that's the genesis of, I'll speak for John here, of us coming here tonight, we very much appreciate the recognition and we're humbled by it, but really, the, the fear to me is like, diet processing this and my family and other friends that were on the beach, and their report back was, it looked so normal, and that you guys had complete control of the situation. The reality is, and you may, you probably had better control than I did, but it was not that. And, you know, thinking about the kids that were there and the, the people in this community who I care deeply about, is to understand a little bit of what that ocean can bring at times, and try to make informed decisions about, about what you do, because the reality is, is I probably was very close to not being well enough equipped to, to handle that situation. John is a very different story, but not trained in that situation, and it turns out I'm not in great shape, so I was humbled pretty, pretty quickly during it. But no, it did start with the third gentleman, who if this message could get to him, I think John would say the same thing, we'd love to talk, we've had an opportunity to talk multiple times, and it's been very healthy, I think, for both of us, but he did, he saved the first child, and that's when I recognized that he was trying to fight him in, he was too far for me to get to, but they got washed up onto shore, and essentially like what I remember is him dropping the kid down on, on the grounds safely, it was zero hesitation diving back into the water, and that's when I recognized that there was, there was a head bobbing out, out past the, past the wave, so, you know, I'm happy to discuss like what went on during it, if you guys want to hear, I'm also happy to, to give the stage to John to kind of, kind of put some context to if he wants to, whatever you guys want to do here.
First of all, thank Jay, because together we did answer. Still, just kind of funny, traumatic, but I was with Caroline, my wife, and we were getting ready to go, and all of a sudden I heard somebody yell, somebody's drowning. I turned and I saw a head in the water, I think I saw him go down, but the bottom line is, I just ran, stripping my clothes off as I'm running, handed my phone to a woman that had no idea who she was, I said, and I was in the water before I knew it, going out. Luckily, I've had training as a dive master to rescue people and exactly what to do and what not to do, and once I got out there, Jay and I together got the kid calm and was able to bring him in without incident other than, you know, with the rough conditions. Once we got it in, both Jay and I are exhausted, Hadley stepped up, took control of the situation, which I'm thankful for, got the kid, took care of all the necessities, because people don't know this, but even once you get out of the water, you can drown, even not being in the water, so it's really important that not only people get pulled out of the water, but then, once they're on shore, they get the appropriate care, because even on the shore, things can go bad, and all that work and all that effort could be just lost in a split second, and without a note, so it's, it's, it's everybody working together and came out with a great success story. I talked to Caroline and said, like to think it was, I, well, I don't even think, I don't even know if I was thinking, but I think, after it, I just kept thinking, I hope that somebody would do that for our kids if it was. I mean, even Jay and I are fathers, and we know between the two of us, like, we know a lot of kids in this community, and we would do it for anybody and anything, just like the lifeguards, you know, it's what you do, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You get a lot of good points, and we all appreciate you, but I believe that's a difficult goal, so their appreciation as well. We have some significant, two of you, you come up?
Please go ahead.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone else who was involved turning this from an utter emergency to a well-handled situation, and we appreciate your confidence as well as their heroism.
Yeah, I, and I'm sorry we haven't gotten a chance to meet yet, and a lot of it I don't remember, but I remember Hadley got there at the exact time I needed her, we needed to get the kid to dry land, and I don't remember, I think I might have, sorry if I swore at you, but I was like, I can't, so I'm done, and she acted so instinctively, and the community should be, should be very, very, very proud of her, so. Still going.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you all.
Often we don't know when we first hire you guys, and we know what you're going to do for us, so, and I'm sure, you never really sure, you know, people who really stepped up.
And, and thank you for closing the beach.
Yes.
Like that undertow was way beyond what anybody should have been doing, thank you.
Well, what people don't know is the day before, my friend and I got yelled at by Hadley kindly, very kindly, very nicely, how two old guys were causing trouble swimming in the ocean when she was very kind.
Very kindly kicked you out.
Pleasant as this has been, I think we should probably move on.
Move on to your business. Thank you guys for marking me off. Thank you. Thanks for what you guys do for Jay. Owen.
Yeah.
To Jay.
Owen, nice to meet you.
Yeah, of course. You're good.
Next item on our agenda, okay, is, is the Planning Board, Sarah Creighton, to talk about the special meeting, she has PowerPoint, and can you kind of make a call?
Yeah.
All right, there we go. Is that Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, I just find it's easier to get my flats together and put together some bullet points, so. So, good evening, everybody. Sarah Creighton, Chair of the Planning Board, and also Chair of the Harbor Management Task Force, not in charge of mooring. So, the Planning Board had a retreat at the end of, beginning of the summer, and we identified several priorities for the coming year. Those are downtown zoning district, senior housing, and driveway entrances. Also, we have a long list of future projects, the top, what, most important one is rethinking or understanding the, the future planning for the general district, the districts D 1 and D 2, there's some confusion about those, we need to fix, and examining the thresholds for special permits. So, you know, we've been really working hard on upgrading our zoning, which I, I think is sometimes was, looks like a wildebeest, you know, it's got, all the parts don't well align with each other, and our consultant a number of years ago, we've been chipping away at these exciting zoning changes. So, should we have a November town meeting is the topic that I wanted to just talk through tonight and brief you where we are on a couple things. If there were a, a November town meeting, these are the things that we would talk about. Downtown district, creating a downtown district, senior housing or a piece of senior housing, driveway entrances, housekeeping, we always have a list of things that we can fix quickly when we have time, and the accessory dwelling units, the Attorney General should have come back with their approval, hopefully, for the two bylaws we did in the spring, and they've asked for another 60 days, which was put in about October 15th. There was something simple to fix, if they have an objection, we might try to do that if it's complicated, obviously we don't have time to really vet it. So, quickly, why would we do a downtown district? First of all, during, oops, sorry, during the M B T A zoning process, it was identified that we were kind of vulnerable to the pressure for residential development. We're seeing that with the redevelopment of the cargo property from a large commercial streetscape to residential and have some all retail, and we held a forum where residents very much said, we expect that it's a commercial retail downtown, and not in so many words, but what was interesting is all the visioning was about, we can have a commercial this, we can have a retail that, and no one said we could change the downtown core into all residential. It was just assumed that commercial, we've been talking a lot with the Downtown Improvement Committee, Mark's been going to all their meetings, Gord Brewster has been going to all their, is on their, on the Downtown Improvement Committee, Steve and some of the other members have come to a lot of our meetings, so we've been going back and forth. And we want to preserve some of the commercial retail uses in key areas. We also hired a consultant who's expert in town, and to allow, and change our zoning to allow mixed use. So, the idea is that we would have a new downtown district, a subset of the general district, although it would become its own district. We are going to have a walk tomorrow at 5:00 to walk around and say, okay, what about this, should this be in or out, because you don't want it to make it so big that it's unreasonable, or so small that it's in. We would allow mixed use in the zoning change, encourage the preservation or expansion of commercial and retail, and have a special permit for conversion to residential. Lot of discussion with public about why that, I don't want to get much in the weeds tonight. Our timing is that we had a June forum, so many of you attended, along with 60 others. We've had several Planning Board meetings, the Downtown Permit Committee. In July, we had a meeting where we had a lot of input from business owners, as well as the public. We have a working draft, we're doing the boundary walk tomorrow, we'll have another draft at our first meeting in September, we'll be ready to have a public forum or two in September, and a public hearing in October, if we are moving forward for the November town meeting. That's, here's what that district might look like, this is the area we're going to walk our night, so please join us, anybody, you're welcome to, to join us. The next issue is senior housing. We don't allow senior housing as a special use. Sometimes, some communities allow deeded senior housing and with a density bonus, small or large, depending on community. Having senior housing helps that problem of allowing seniors to age in town. Right now, our zoning allows charitable nursing homes, hospitals, and sanitarium, so it's outdated, and it doesn't allow those in the L C D. So, if you were going to have a hospital, one would think that the L C D would actually be the logical place to have a hospital, we're not likely to have a hospital, but, but just as a, as an example of why we need to keep updating this stuff. So, we either need to revise that or delete it and, and do some other things. What is senior housing? It might be small, converting my home to three units that are deeded to be for 55 plus, 60 plus people, duty, and I would get a density bonus, perhaps, that's an example. I've been finding, we've got two drafts on the table that we've been working on for three years, might be medium sized units, where there could be a dozen senior housing units in one of the districts, several districts, or a larger, more of a senior housing facility perhaps than the L C D. So, of course, they will have size limitations, regulations, parking, and I think we're contemplating all of them with special permit, permission. We've been working on this for three years, we've had a couple of drafts, Chris, Mary Foley and I held a number of workshops, we interviewed people who had built senior housing in Hamilton and other places. Right now, we have a draft, and we'll be working on it some more this, this month, sort of the same schedule as the downtown, a little bit behind on that, on, it lags a little bit, but I think we are prepared to meet, have additional meetings if there is going to be a down, November town meeting, and I think we might put this forward increment, we might first just do the small and fix the language about the limited partial district, not try to iron out every detail in the middle, based on public input. The next issue is the general bylaws. Driveway entrances are regulated in the general bylaw, change we made a number of years ago. The Planning Board used to go out and sidewalk every single driveway, but now it's the responsibility of the D P W, and only those that are sort of oddballs, don't meet the regulations, come to the Planning Board, but what we've learned with the D P W is that the regulations in the bylaw are super restrictive, they don't allow for special cases where two driveways, for example, makes sense because of the photography or the, or something else. And so, we want to fix that by doing, sort of like what we've done with Stormwater, peak the authority in the general bylaws, adopt regulations by the Planning Board that can be more easily amended as things come up, create a, a special exemption process and move the standards to the regulation. Mark's been working with D P W and FIRE already, and he has a draft of the regulations, so it's really just a pretty simple change to strip all of that regulatory language out of the general bylaws, create the Planning Board authority with the public, there's two issues, regulation. Some odds and ends, you know, we have some language that's still out there that's, you know, not allowed by law, so we should break that, we've got some footnotes in the Table of Uses that are confusing, we've got more than one, and improperly numbered, we still have a list from Mark Bobrowski, and like I said, we might tweak the A D U bylaw, we hear back from the Attorney General. So, those are, we have a list, we'll have a draft, if, if there's a November town meeting, we'll, we'll work hard, probably have a special one off, off cycle meeting to hammer those out, and all of them, I think, are pretty. So, that's the, I think that's my last slide on that. So, that's the November town meeting, what we would put forward, I don't want to get too much in the weeds on any of those issues, happy to talk with you, and we will be back to you to tell you more about the specifics of the draft, but that's what we would bring forward in November. So, I'll stop there for a minute and.
So much work to do. I'm mostly concerned about the timing, I think it was your first slide. This is ready, everything else was, well, if this happens, this happens, that's ready, if this happens, this happens, that's ready.
Let's just take the downtown for a second, just if we only did that, at least, I mean, I think we could do that certainly, and there's some of these typos in the general, and the driveway is ready, and it doesn't make a robust town meeting. Might get Eli a chance to get his feet wet, and I, I'm sure we would bring a, at least a part of senior housing forward, whether we bring it comprehensively, or whether we, you know, say, let's do the small conversion, then here with the meeting. I do think that, I know the M B T A's zoning task force did exemplary public outreach, that was a very complex issue with multi, you know, over the course of, and it's almost unreasonable, we, we just, you know, you We just, you know, you can't do that for every issue. I think the downtown issue is unexpected of us. Now, we can wait till April. The concern is that people now have the wind of it. So, you know, there's a lot of pressure for residential conversions, for residential properties. I'm not going to say whether for residential conversions or today. It obviously depends on people's leases and their own particulars. So, you know, if you've got anything else on the November town meeting, we will be there. It is certainly your call.
I think Eli has, Eli has asked to speak.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Just fine.
So, let's see. So first of all, just from a pure logistic standpoint, I'm actually almost home. So if you wanted to discuss things a little bit more, so I can get home and not be driving, that's fine. And then I can speak. Or I can speak right now, whichever you'd prefer.
I think we can probably find five minutes' worth of things to talk about.
I can talk about the harbor management.
Yes, why don't you?
Yeah, all right. All right, Eli, we'll talk back, talk in a minute.
Just before we move on to that.
Yep.
I think it would be helpful if you could maybe lay out a little bit of a schedule. You know, I know that date isn't set in stone yet, but there's a lot of.
It would be November 10th.
Okay, so then, and then there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of lead up, you know, required lead up time with zoning changes. So just kind of seeing what that schedule looks like would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, I think we kind of worked through that today and that if we would, we would present it to this, I think the, you have to present it to the select board in your first meeting in the summer. And we would hold a rest, a public hearing the next day if we have to. I mean, and, yeah, we have the.
Yeah, so after the select board in September, we are meeting in our first meeting in October. We would have the public hearing after that sometime between that meeting and meeting. The articles are close enough that another month with a couple of input sessions is perfectly a reasonable time period to have it completed. We're really talking about creating just a small, our downtown area, separate district. We've all seen maps. Very specific, very focused zoning for that. There are some differences, but not a lot of dramatic differences from the general district. This is only 20% of the entire general district, smaller area. So it's right now, just in the next few weeks, we'll be doing the refinement of what we drafted. And then the driveway bylaw is pretty much complete, just final walk through with Chuck. And senior housing, we have to, the planning board kind of has to discuss exactly how do we want to break it up? Or do we want to bring the higher, which was drafted previously to town meeting? Or kind of say, well, five-year ones. Size units, density that's already been worked out. And so some of those things, George just kind of needs to decide how they want to think. And the feedback that we get, and Sarah's a lot more familiar with the feedback we receive past.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of a coin. I don't think we have, this is, I don't see this as an emergency personally, you know. But I wanted to, and we will add some meetings, look at that meetings. They chucked through some of this stuff. But so.
Yeah, my thing is really just making sure, I know that there's, you know, either by statute or by bylaw, there's required meetings and notice, you know, 14-day notice for a special town meeting. There's certain requirements, I'm sure I have to get up to speed on that. You know, as far as I manage, I don't know if the FINCOM does a book for a special town meeting. So, right, so, or if there's any materials that need to be printed for the meeting, you know, just kind of having all that stuff in mind. And then, of course, you know, we have to fill out the form for the Attorney General for, you know, those dates of those hearings and when they were posted so that the process meets all the requirements. So just making sure that, you know, if we do have a special town meeting and we have all that ironed out ahead of time.
Yeah, so the zoning change is, we have plenty of time to go through and meet all the requirements. Not familiar with what's required actually for a meeting.
Oh, yeah. We'll work together on it.
I mean, so that's what we would do. Like I said, it's my fault. A whole lot nicer if we don't have a town meeting. I just think it kind of depends on how you feel about the urgency of the downtown zoning. I mean, that's, that's the, I think, people during MBTA said this was an issue. We have, we held a forum in June. It was very clear that people want to, they didn't say zoning specifically, mixed use came up. But that's the, but I'm not sure we hold town meeting without single issue. That's, you guys get to make that decision.
I'm reluctant to try to push this. Because the zoning, the MBTA task force set pretty high bar. And I'd like to, even if it's a scaled down version of that, and I think right now we're trying to double square pegging a round hole. And I think we can do a better job, given the time, to really get out there and engage the public. So that's, I mean, I just love it, just rushing through something. Although I think I appreciate trying to get Eli's slide of it comfortably. You know, it's an expense that I don't think the town should incur.
But we also want changes we put forward to be successful to the extent. But you never know how the meeting, how the town really feels.
Until you say you're going to have a town meeting. Until you say you're going to have a town.
Right. No, until you actually have a town meeting. And that's what the, I think we certainly learned with MBTA that the noise was disproportionate due to votes.
Realistically, what kind of timeline do we have to decide?
Well, like I said, I need to find out exactly what the posting requirements are for a special town meeting. Prior to that, any zoning change would require a public hearing, which has its own posting requirements. I think that's a 14-day notice in newspapers and public places. And then after the hearing, I think you have up to 21 days to put together a recommendation. I don't know if that, if that type of recommendation you would want to get out to the public before the meeting. So there's.
Because I think what we're all asking for is a timeline, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a chart? Love your charts, thank you, by the way. Need a picture, timeline. And if November 10th would be the proposed meeting date.
Yeah.
Then to your point, Tony, let's work back from that, right? And when then is the drop dead date by when we need a decision?
I would think it's going to be either our next meeting or first meeting in October would make it really, really close.
That's what I'm saying.
The other thing, just to say, just from a, November 10th is right before November 11th, which is holiday, which makes it a.
Four-day weekend.
Potentially four-day weekend, so that's not a great.
I'm sure there are good reasons.
Traditionally, we do it on a Monday. I hadn't thought about November 11th.
I would think that's not a great day to get a warrant.
We could, ugh. We can't do it a week later because that's getting into Thanksgiving.
So maybe we don't have much left. It's really up to you. I don't think we have a strong, you know.
Eli, are you at home yet?
I am. Okay, so originally, when I heard about this, there were basically two articles that were going on to, might go onto the warrant. It sounds like there might be potentially more than that now. So first question. If, in fact, we delayed until spring, would you then be expecting to bring more items from that list onto the spring, the annual town meeting?
Good question. I certainly downtown district, really the driveway entrances, those are both, I think they're relatively easy to understand, but they would, they are arch priorities. And I think, yeah, I think we've been talking about senior housing for three years. So I know that several members of the board are very, very anxious to do that. So I think that we would have those three. The others on my list, I think we defer.
We don't, we won't know, Eli, we won't know until early October if the Attorney General has any suggested amendments to ADUs. So if we get that in time to include, that would be really, really close. I doubt we would have enough time.
I think if it's a tactical detail, we'd be able to.
So that could be a spring, a possible spring article.
What's the danger of delaying? What is it in our ADU article that we're protecting in town that we would lose if we waited until spring?
I don't think anything. I think, I think the Attorney General would just rule something, you know, illegal and it just wouldn't be effective.
So we had two ADU articles. One was the under 900 square feet, which is adding regularly sort of guardrails around what is, what is required by law. So if, and we suspect that there may be two pieces of that that might be ruled out if we're. The interesting thing to me is that they delayed ruling on the larger, the 901 to 1200 square foot ADUs, which is unusual, is, was surprising because we can tell everybody that's pink if we want. I mean, it's, that's not, there's no law around that. And so we have no idea why they waited on that. And the short-term rentals in ADUs is something we've heard very well of.
It's also possible that it could just be backlog because every community, you know, the ADU law went in so quickly, everybody was taking it up at spring town meeting. So it could just be backlog.
My concern is at the moment, we have no protection. Until the Attorney General rules that our bylaw is legal.
I think your zoning goes back to the date of, your effective date goes back to being approved by the.
Once approved.
Once approved.
Today.
Today.
And we can't, that we can't.
Well, it doesn't much matter because I don't think you've got enough time in your timeline for them to come back.
Unless, unless we hear during, if we hear during September, we can make any progress.
I would say if we're going to have a November town meeting, we'll pick up the phone and we'll call them and say, listen, we want to.
Right, so, so I actually like the idea of having a separate town meeting dedicated to this topic. There is more opposed zoning changes than I thought. I thought it was only going to be one or two, but it seems like you have a potential list. And before we throw in the towel and say we're not going to do a town meeting, I'd like to see a timeline. Because what I'm hearing from the people who are doing the work is that it's doable. And I just wonder, we all got upset with what happened with the cargo building. The long time between now and next April. How would we feel if we said, nah, let's not have a town meeting, we can wait, and another property is sold and becomes residential? How would we feel then? I would not feel good. So I would rather try as hard as we can to make sensible changes. May not be everything we think we need to do, but sensible changes and get them approved. Let's take an iterative approach if we can.
I do think November 10th.
And I don't, I never heard the November 10th date until today, so I get it.
So in terms of timeline, I don't think that this would be a particular issue that's found around, but the deadline for submission of citizen petition articles for a special town meeting is 28 days in advance of the meeting. So that backs up into, you know, around October 10th or October 12th, 14th. I'm not sure that you've got exact data, I didn't count. But ahead of any actual town meeting, I would be inclined to give people the opportunity to be aware that they have a deadline like that. I mean, it's always my preference for people who have issues that they want to get on the warrant to actually hand them to the select board and see if the select board would be willing to take them up. I've not heard of any ending issues that people might want to raise. But if you delay a decision very much, it becomes much, much harder to notify people, give people reasonable notification, give them the opportunity, if they wanted to, to go to the select board first. Which means if somebody did submit a citizen petition article, it might not be formed very well. We've seen that happen in the past. So I would prefer to know much sooner rather than later that there was actually going to be a special town meeting in the fall. So I would not delay a decision very long at all. I would not like to see, I don't think, that full list of things that you had earlier in your presentation arrive at the annual town meeting all in one block. I think that might be a bit much to tack on to a regular annual town meeting.
Which is partly why all those administrative things get taken on role.
Oh, I just checked the calendar. Thanksgiving is November 27th, which makes the 17th a plausible date. So just for the sake of your timeline.
Okay, well, we can certainly get a deadline for you.
Yes.
Next week, or today, this week, yes?
Yeah, this week.
Well, we can't talk about it until two weeks from today.
Right.
You'll have it for your meeting.
Yes. And, and, and could you give us also a draft of the driveway? Anything that you have that you might, are serious answers.
Okay, sure. And I guess certainly if you, there may be a consensus, maybe Tony has a recommendation that it's a no-go in particular, you know, we'll be in touch. Okay, okay. Great, you want to go on to the harbor?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I know you take up various issues for updates. So Anne and I were just chatting that this, I think the harbor management task force comes up next time. So we decided. So what, the harbor management task force has actually been, we've been chugging along for a year and a half to develop a plan for the harbor. Not a lot of definition to that. The harbor is actually broadly defined by the policies. They're out of DEP. The harbor management includes actually the coastline and the beaches and the main harbor. We've said it includes beaches, but we're not dealing with beach policy. It's just like, we have a whole nother staff and group that deals with beach policy. It's grant-funded. We have a $100,000 grant, and I'm not sure where that's from. And at Bions Recommendation Urban Harbors Institute out of U.S., Boston was hired to do the bulk of this work. So why, there hasn't ever been a harbor management plan. There, it is something that many other IFs, which has, Marvel has, many harbors have. And a state-approved plan would allow us to develop certain land use changes that might be water-related, that you would not otherwise be able to do if you don't have a management plan in. You know, I'm not sure exactly what those would be right now, but we were thinking about ideas to particularly promote the commercial aspect. Who's on the harbor management task force? This is the list. You pointed these folks, but just to refresh your memory. This is the list. You pointed these folks, but just to refresh your memory, here's, we've actually had nineteen meetings. Like I said, we are not dealing with warrant. We had, early on, instructed this kind of robust mission statement and one of the members is actually rewriting it, but it gives you at least a sense of what we were trying to do. It's evolving. We've had public input from a forum that was well-attended back a year ago. Urban Harbors has done interviews and a survey and the video is called nineteen meetings. The challenge with the public input is that the context and the background matter. And Urban Harbors has had a challenge, a process to take input, categorize it into issues and recommendations, but they often don't know that certain things already exist, or certain things don't make sense, or certain things don't. Yeah, so we've had to do a lot of helping them to kind of make sense. What we've, we're trying to avoid is a laundry list of, you know, a hundred and two recommendations that are overwhelming. So we've, we've been a challenging client, I would say. Our progress so far is they've compiled a significant background about a resource area all in one place. And we're in the ongoing process of findings and recommendations. They were originally called issues and we were saying, let's call them findings, which is a little bit more thoughtful. And like I said, it's hard for Urban Harbors to evaluate public input. Also, difficulties of the open meeting law in a document of size is very challenging. When you want to get everybody's input in it, things that you have to have a tedious process. And so the next step is we're finalizing these issue findings and recommendations, setting priorities. And then to go share it with some of the key stakeholders, you folks, the harbor advisory committee. And sort of our big picture that doesn't always get said out loud, that we think is, we're in the harbor of the coast are the treasures that define Manchester. If you look at the Manchester him, the coast and the, you know, it goes without, it's so obvious, but it is what makes us special from everything, from our views to access to boating, to the ability to launch a kayak, the ability to take a walk on the beach and run your dog. So there are five areas that Urban Harbors has sort of sussed out. We reorganized them and refined them. And I'll just give you the couple of key takeaways on each, just so to whet your appetite to think about it. Again, all in draft phase, all just work in progress. So the first is to support the marine economy. That has three major parts, boat yards and the water support, tourism and shell fishing, and beaches in the tourism. So you want to think about harbor and broadly speaking, although many of the recommendations have sort of focused on the, what we consider the harbor itself. Provide safe navigable waterways, of course, sort of obvious, right? But we're not sure, the big issue that we've talked a great deal about, we've asked Urban Harbors for their advice and they don't have the experience on the issue of what is our capacity? Obviously, it's a finite, harbor is a finite resource. You know, it's only so big. And what is our ability in terms of capacity and warrants? We're not saying that we are at capacity necessarily, except in some areas we might be approaching. What about peak use? Because in a harbor with safety and water, heat seems to be the most important. People look out there right now, navigation is easy, nobody's going up and down the harbor. But, you know, yesterday or Sunday afternoon, everybody's kind of making scooter races. A squall in that kind of situation is a very different, that's what you have to really, we think you have to really think about. Emergency response, staffing and funding, what, how much can we afford? And how does that limit the resources and facilities maintenance? More facilities we have, you've got a twenty-year plan to repair docks and all those things. So maintaining public access, the Urban Harbors folks are always want, every, all of their plans say increase public access. And we've pushed back and say, we have a ton of public access, particularly for residents, to the waterways through a number, Fox Point, and that's been a more part of the program. But we need to maintain it and keep an eye on it and not, and also things like views and this is, that helps the tourism. Ensure healthy water quality. While we have beaches for, as required, we don't have a comprehensive water quality set of data. So while there's a recommendation out there that somebody in the public said, which is to limit fertilizer application along the harbor to prevent growth in the harbor, we're actually not sure if that's, because we don't have data. It's a nice idea, but you know, we want policies that are based in fact, not just in conjecture. And then obviously, the climate planning that the town has done is largely focused on downtown and the flooding. We, we have some recommendations about thinking more broadly. And one that we're testing right now, but thinking about is, what if there were a more streamlined air permitting process, at least within town, for some of the coastal work or hardening certain places? What if, so for example, if there was a uniform seawall height, so that if Mark raises his seawall to ten feet and Tony does eight feet and John does twelve feet, you know, that, that's kind of, the person at eight feet who came first is going to get hurt, you know, like, so. There's some work around that with my comment and whether the state will let us do it. So all of these are things that Urban Harbors actually hadn't really thought about too much, but they're doing a good job of keeping up with us and it's work in progress. So that's all I have to say on that. We meet again Thursday at five thirty. Unfortunately, I know most of you will not be there, it'll be at Fox Point. I'm sorry, I won't be able to be there. So, stay tuned. That's all I have for tonight.
Just, just one question. So all of the, all of the data collection are done? It's all done? Although they're constantly coming back, it sounds like to the committee for various clarifications because the history of.
The data collection by the harbor management folks is a public opinion data as well as background data. We had sort of thought that they would be doing water quality data and this question of capacity, that they would be able to help us think about, you know, what do we spend compared to other towns, or how much public access do we have compared to other towns and that kind of thing. And there's, there's, they have a softer science, a softer. No, but I think there's some, I think we've identified important things that we need to continue to keep an eye on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So are any of the, this is Eli, sorry. Are any of the items that you're looking at likely at this point to generate articles on this? The annual town meeting warrant that are regulatory as opposed to financial in nature?
No on financial and no on regulatory. I think it's too soon. I think at some future date, there are some potentially regulatory things, but I think some other are policy type things that can be dealt with by harbor advisory perhaps, or we'll be figuring out who. I don't see too many town meeting things, certainly not in the near.
Cool, thanks.
Maybe, maybe funding requests for additional research or something like that, but we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
We need to cross that bridge. I think there's some of it that, I think that the water quality protocol is reestablished. And Urban Harbors has helped us to specify what that in-depth would look like, and there are people who do it. The capacity question is a much more nuanced question.
Timeline?
I think they want to be done by December. I think that's what the grant is or the contract. I'm less worried about having it be a pretty document and more worried about having it be a helpful document. They're quite focused on it being.
Anyone else in the room online?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Hopefully I won't have to worry about.
Well, if you do, we can restart it. We're pretty good. We've had some experience.
Well, just because I have to sound innocent anyway, I think.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. We're still here.
Good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, the National Grid hearings. And I, Brian.
I move that the select board open the public hearing under petitions of National Grid to install underground PVC conduit through twenty-three Old Neck Road, Sixth Friends Street and sixty-one School Street.
Second.
I think anyone wants to go?
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, Anne says yes?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing is open for twenty-three Old Neck, Sixth Friends Street and sixty-one School Street. Is there anybody from National Grid who would like to speak?
Yes, good. Hi, my name is Michael Casali and I'm representing National Grid at forty-four Rivers Street in Beverly. And yeah, so. So we are, we have these three petitions for Sixth Friends Street, twenty-three Old Neck and.
Sixty-one School.
Sixty-one School, yes. Yeah, so we're just, we're petitioning to install conduits for sixty-one School Street. We're petitioning to install two, three-inch conduits, approximately twenty feet. Because the customer is acquiring, is upgrading their service. And so we need to install new conduits that are picking up, install new cables to give them their four hundred amp service they request. Sixth Friends Street, almost the same thing. The customer is upgrading their service. So we're petitioning to install two, three-inch conduits, also approximately twenty feet from the existing manhole to the harbor. And twenty-three Old Neck. We're petitioning to install, I think it's about two hundred eighty-five feet of two, four-inch conduits. So the existing conduits and cables, cables that we have running under Old Neck Road right now is very old there. Rotted, the conduits are breaking. So we are replacing the, we're replacing all the conduits, the cables to meet our current standards that we have right now for our infrastructure. And also, we're installing bigger cables to feed, uh, bigger cables to feed twenty-three Old Neck, four hundred amp service.
Are there any questions from the board?
None here.
Are there any questions from people who are signed in with work? Are there any questions for people who are present? In that case, I think we can close.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Let the select board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
The next is you, John?
Assuming we have no comments here.
Assuming we have no, if you had comments, you should have commented during the hearing.
Check. I move the select board approve the National Grid petitions to install underground PVC conduit to twenty-three Old Neck, Sixth Friends Street and sixty-one School Street.
Further discussion?
Just before, just for further discussion, there are some conditions that the DPW submitted to us, which will include in the permit, the National.
Yes, having to do with the reconstruction.
Restoration of the roadway.
Okay. Okay.
That's part of that motion. Okay. Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy, Brian and Jeff.
Yes.
Okay. The other item was a request for a hearing for one forty-six Bridge Street. And that was involved putting a conduit into a private road. And I think that the select board is not in a position to offer that.
Right. So technically, the authority of the select board to hold a hearing on this type of petition lies with impact to the public way. It seems to us that the impact here is solely on a private way. The, so it really isn't for the select board to provide for a hearing or approve or deny or install conditions. That would be the responsibility of the homeowner and the third-party owners of the private way. Unless National Grid does any sort of deed research and determines that where they are proposing the conduit does impact public property. It doesn't seem like it does.
It does not.
We did, you know, I will say, we did hear from a number of neighbors. We also heard from the contractor of the one forty-six Bridge Street. It sounds like that there is some discussion that will be having, that they will be having in the future along the same lines, talking about, you know, required restoration, but it's not for the board to select, the select board to oversee.
If they change their mind and want to go out to Bridge Street, then there's, there's absolutely no penalty for this having been skipped over and out. Welcome to bring back whatever is necessary.
Yes, question?
Yes, of course.
My name is Ron Skates and I'm on the board of the Urban Avenue Association. So if they go out to Bridge Street from the property directly, that means they don't have to have a hearing or anything like that.
Then, then National Grid will come back to us as, and we'll go through it as we did with the other.
Thank you, I misunderstood.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Right. Thank you for presenting. And we will look forward.
I hope we don't have to hear from any of you again.
On this topic.
On this topic.
We can work it out.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is the introduction and appointment of Max Messer.
So I interviewed Max last week for our facility planning committee. I was extremely impressed with Max's eagerness and dedication already to the town through the sustainability committee and his background really would provide some value to the facility planning committee. I'll let Max talk a little bit about that, but we talked about what, you know, his ability to serve on the committee. He feels he's able to do that, even though he serves on the other, he thinks he has, he believes he has the time to dedicate to the committee. His background, he has a master's in public policy and a minor in energy and environment. His public, private and nonprofit sector experience, especially in this environment, will serve us well as he sees how some of these big decisions about large-scale capital projects and their level of efficiency can impact the town's future costs, the cost of insurance on these buildings, and even possibly put us in a position for favorable funding or borrowing opportunities because of those efficiency measures if we choose to go.
Get in other worlds.
But he has experience, actually, you know, in his professional life, seeking out those types of opportunities. So with that.
Oh, great to be back with you again.
Nice to have you again.
No, my pleasure. It's an honor to be considered. I, yeah, I was, I've been working with. working with Sustainability Committee since January, so that's when I last saw you, also. And I think that my interest in Sustainability Committee was really not just in, um, uh, a lot of folks on waste trash, obviously quite a pertinent topic these days. Certainly not with that crap right now. No, no, uh, we'll not touch on that. But, um, for me, the, the question really is also on the future, um, not just greening a community, but it's really making things more resilient. Of course, with this, uh, great and bad, of course, coast to hardening and those sorts of measures. Extremely relevant to think about how future public facilities get built. The other key piece is that there is, and this is something I think Sustainability Committee in coordination with D P W will hopefully bring back to you at a certain point, the climate leader communities grants that are available from the state if different, if communities kind of commit to various actions, create plans, you know, um, all these various things. It basically can unlock, you know, another million dollars or so to offset potentially, you know, if you decide to upgrade some of the facilities compared to the, kind of business's usual plan, that could actually be offset to some extent by state grants. And so the point simply is that, you know, we could make the buildings more resilient, which could result in potentially lower insurance costs over the long. Could be obviously lower environmental attacker, energy usage of these facilities, uh, also, which also kind of. So, um, it's really about thinking about how to coordinate those pieces. Bringing the lenses together in a way that, uh, hopefully will be, be long-term, uh, better outcome. But now, I think the last piece Tony was just mentioning is just in, in, in the case of issuing bonding for these facilities built. Their precedence around, uh, the state as well as certain municipalities issuing, say, green bonds or other kind of special bonds or the use of proceeds from the bond, or issue the bond for what it's used for, is being more transparent. Private investors actually quite like these issuers, uh, more transparency, know where the money's going. Say, we invested in some, uh, certain product, and you can actually see a lower, uh, financing cost ultimately to the town doing that in some cases, not in all cases, but in some cases. So, um, my point is, is coming, we're talking about how that, there are case studies out there of how it's done. So, again, if we're going to be issuing a long-term bond, we may as well make sure that we take advantage of all the different angles you can do to, again, keep it a facility responsible. That's my little spiel.
Uh, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm thanking you.
Yeah, no, yeah. I thank you for raising your hand again. Now, that's two committees. But that's great. You feel lucky given your background and provide some input on all the projects that are really on the burner for us.
Okay, well, I move that the select board appoint Max, is it Misservy or?
Misservy, yes.
Misservy. As an at-large, at-large member on the Facility Planning Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Were the discussion? John?
Yes.
Yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back. Sorry we made you sit through most of the.
Yeah.
Oh, very interesting.
You have a very low intellect.
Yeah.
Low bar.
I, I live in this town, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
Yeah, Chester, that's a good one.
Okay, um, Manchester Essex Rotary, um, is in the consent agenda, but please explain to us what.
What we're doing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, um, we, uh, we had a fundraising auction last May, and one of the things we put up on auction was a lobster boil on the beach, and 16 people bid on it and won it. And so now we're trying to perform that task of delivering dinner. Probably, you know, it's on September 13th, and it's probably gonna start at like 4:00 afternoon and ends like by 8:30, 9 o'clock. It's, uh, just food, uh, you know, no liquor or anything like that. But, um, you know, the town rec committee clearly advised us that we should come before the select to use the beach. Okay? Select avoid, and that's why we're here. We still have to get our permit for the food from the health department and notify the fire department and see what he has to say about us having a propane, you know, oil bow in the food. So that's the extent of the thing, 16 people. There could be a couple of people that aren't from town, so we'll probably talk to the chief about just letting him know that we might have a couple of people probably after hours, September 13th, it's still in the season, when you shouldn't be there if you're non-resident, so. Well, I think, October 1st, I thought. We need to be packed up deep, so we'll talk to everybody. We, we know the drill for most of the big things we do. This little one caught us by surprise because there was only 16 people coming. So that's why we're, uh, a little late on doing this.
I'm, uh, as a member, former member of the Rotary, I work these best, these are very successful. They're diligent in everything they do. And certainly make sure we check with the health inspector.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a couple of us that sort of say, uh, certified.
I mean, because I don't think Sean's gonna be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sean pretty much the free pass with Monday.
My, my update, I haven't done an update class, but I, um, I was certified for me.
It's in the consent agenda, right?
It's, it's in the consent agenda. We will vote on that all, all at once, but I think. The fact that there are no questions and, and a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Despite his recommendation. Despite your recommendation.
I might have heard you.
We're gonna make it go a long way. Well, have a good night while we stay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, clear zone updates. John?
Uh, yeah. Got a couple of things here. I mentioned the D P W contract for the installers of the meters last meeting, and they have signed that contract. And in fact, the contractor is gonna put together a video. They'll put on the website that will go through all of the installation activities for typical installation, um, installation work for a meter. And more to the point, go over how the software works, so people can put this on their phone and track their meters. So all of that information will be in a video that will be done this month. And they will start this month with the installation of the meters. Chuck also mentioned he's pushed up, uh, the to-do project with regard to the sidewalk to the beach from Masconomo, the beach. He wants to redo that sidewalk that's been, I think, on the to-do list for some time, including the, the section that is cement that is, that curves around the parking lot. He'd like to redo all of that, probably expand the parking of the sidewalk a little bit, put in a curb, and, uh, have some ADA compliant, um.
Ramps.
Ramps at the intersection. So he's gonna try and work that out with the, the folks, the contractors that are gonna be working on Mill Street and Forestry that are cleaning that up after all the construction that's there. So that is, uh, something that may happen as early as October. So, planning on that. The library, um, I attended a meeting with them about a week or so ago. They're busy, uh, planning for an ADA compliant bathroom. And Nate was there, and he informed us that there is a bill-in committee that will require ADA bathrooms to have an adult changing station, which may, it has to come out of committee, but if it hits, it would be in 2027. An adult changing station is like a dental chair. And is a very large structure that would change plans for a lot of bathrooms that get built, because you'd need several more square feet for this. Right now, ADA bathrooms need to have a, a child changing station, which is a, just a shelf that flips up against the wall. This is not that. So they, uh, are trying to move along as quickly as possible, so they'd be grandfathered in, and it's not, would not be something they'd have to wrestle with, but they've got limited space in the library, I don't know. But, um.
Pretty nice, that's vicious.
Yeah. So, uh, and other than that, um, well, you're gonna report, I guess, on, on lunch today, I guess.
You can.
The Seaway, okay, all right. We, several seniors, of which I am a member, went to lunch using the CADA shuttle today. We got a picture. We're gonna have an article. It'll be very nice, something to promote, and we went to, uh, what was the pub?
Chope Bridge.
Chope Bridge Pub. Very nice. So they picked, picked everybody up at their houses, took us all up there. Tony was there, so was, uh, so was Deb, myself. And we came back. Everything worked very smoothly. They were on time. And, uh, it was something to see how the service worked as well as to, uh, get some material to kind of promote CADA. So, uh, we all just called, said, this is where we're going, and by the way, there'll be some other people that'll be calling in the next day or so. And there were, I guess, a total of seven of us went, so it was very.
You're all, we're after what they're doing.
That's free.
That's free.
Right now, it's.
Right now, it's free through the end of the year, and depending upon grant situations, it may be free beyond that. But it's, I think it's been free for maybe two years or so, for quite some time. It did cost $2 one time, and then some grant money became available, and so.
But it's, it's minimal what it does cost.
Yeah, it's $2, it would be $2 if it were, if that were to change. So anyway, it's, uh, it's an effort to kind of get, uh, a little more high-profile exposure for that service here in town, which will go and do everything. Our town, our town van service is very good, but it really focuses, focuses on medical services and has limited numbers of time during the week that it operates, so it really has to focus on that. And CADA will take you anywhere within its, for, for, you know, wherever you want to go within its service reason, region, which is very similar to what our. So, uh, that's what the story is with the seniors, and I guess that's it.
Yeah, just to that point, I think, you know, we were on two different vans. They were both like extremely clean and accessible.
He went out on one and came back on another one.
Both drivers were very personable and, and careful drivers. Uh, we had really good conversation about, you know, the value in using the service. You know, the fact that you don't have to worry about parking, you don't have to worry about driving, you don't have to worry about, uh, a number of, a number of elements, and you get to, you know, chat with the folks that you're going on, uh, to lunch with or, um, you know, maybe meet some new people, but there's a lot of value in it, and we're gonna try to promote that through a, through an article, uh, next week.
Yeah. The vans hold 12 people, and so we were seven, so it's, it's good.
So, a couple things. Let's see, Bike and Ped, they have been working with the Rotary Club on a fall community fundraiser. A bike, biking fundraiser. So, um, I guess Rotary is taking the lead on this and just looking for input from Bike and Ped. So they may be coming to us at some point for approval of something, because I think Masco is the hub. It would include a children's obstacle course, an eight-mile family ride, and a longer route to Essex. So again, Bike and Ped is just supporting it, but the Rotary seems to be driving that. Also, the recent Kids Pan Mass Challenge had very strong support from the community. 54 kids had registered, and there was possibly 100 additional attendees, and they raised $8,000 to $10,000. I believe the, they also, uh, the Bike and Ped Committee also recently provided support for the brick sidewalk program. I missed that meeting where they actually discussed the brick sidewalk program. Mark gave a, um, presentation, Mark Resnick, to Bike and Ped to support, um, brick sidewalks in the downtown. But I, I missed that particular conversation, so I didn't get the specifics on that.
I, I did too. I know, I know that he talked about potentially, um, bringing it to you tonight, but we ended up, uh, pushing it to our next, and we still had some more communication to do with D P W.
Okay. Yeah, I'm interested in learning more about that, um, you know, as a lady who sometimes wears heels, I'm always hesitant on the cobblestones and the bricks, but I'm sure it can be done in such a way that we won't increase our risk for falls. Let's see, what else? I think, uh, so the Bike and Ped Committee also, um, is participating in the upcoming postal cleanup with the Sustainability Committee on September 21st. And also, they are going to be, either are, are going to be performing walk audits. So just going around, looking at our local sidewalks for the conditions and bike accommodations, I guess, kind of just taking a look, seeing an inventory, you know, what, what is, what's the state of the land out there? So that's, um, that's it on Bike and Ped. Uh, the Facilities Planning Committee, we, um, Chuck and Nate gave us a nice tour of fire station, police station, and Essex's public safety building. And this Friday, we're going to, uh, our D P W, Rockport New D P W, and the proposed D P W site on School Street. So, um, I happen to write a lot of things down. I took a lot of notes about requirements. And there are definitely some opportunities where I think we just need to think a little bit differently and not assume we need some of the space we already have. For example, uh, the police department downstairs, they have this area where they have all of these old archive documents. Well, there are other ways of handling that, rather than building a room or space for that in a new police station. You know, you can have the documents, uh, offloaded to Iron Mountain or some other supplier, which does document storage as a business. Or you can digitize them, whatever. But so there, what I tried to look at when we got our tours is tried to think about what are the requirements we might need to push on a little bit? And also, um, when we toured the new Essex facility, um, made note of, tried to make note of some lessons learned, both positive and, you know, things they would do differently, so we can take advantage of that. But the tours are very helpful, and I thank, uh, Tony, you, and Chuck, and everybody for pulling them all together, because they are really, really helpful. That's it.
Fox and Rec. The, um, you heard Cheryl. What you didn't hear is actually what happened. And apparently, the two kids were not swimming, initially swimming. They were, uh, playing some kind of football, a ball. And a wave came in and took the kids' feet out, dragged them out, and that's what happened. So, uh, you know, it wasn't like they were out there. They, they thought they were safe. That's something that, uh, turned out that what we saw was, was excellent, you know, in response. The carnival, they approved the carnival. Uh, it'll be before us, probably next meeting, because, uh, essentially exists that the Legion's gonna get involved with alcohol. So they wanna get, uh, just submit one application. It'll be a fundraiser for the Legion as well. And, um, then just the discussions have evolved about actually maybe in the future creating an entire homecoming week, starting with, because the Cod Voight Boat Race is the, uh, previous Sunday, and they're doing something throughout, creating a homecoming week and ending it with the carnival. Discussions with the Masons about moving their lobster bake to that weekend as opposed to what it was two weeks ago. And everyone's on board. It seems like it could be a committee.
Which weekend is the?
So that's the, after the boat race?
So, uh, this year, the Cod Voight Boat Race is the 12th, so it'll be the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, following that. So usually, right after, uh.
11, 17, 16, 17.
The toss refill runs.
I was gonna say, you don't, you don't.
It doesn't compete with the toss, okay. That's going on, so we should see that in, uh, next meeting. The naming of the fields, uh, they follow the recommendations, and, uh, as far as publishing it, I think it's on the website. And they'll be, uh, they've got narrowed down to two names at this point. And, uh, we'll be presenting, hopefully be able to present something to us in the, in the not too distant future, what their recommendations are on that. Uh, there's a pickleball tournament there on September 20th. So keep your eyes and ears open for that. And, um, that's for, uh, Fox and Rec. D B A didn't have anything the month of, uh, August, and I haven't seen what they've, they planned for, uh, that's three weeks away. And that's what I got.
Thank you.
I don't have too much. We heard from the planning board. Harvard Advisory won't meet until week after next. Essex Tech, wise, we welcome the freshman class of 538 kids, which is their biggest class to date. Which was good. We finished our superintendent-director evaluation, and Dr. Riccio got a grade of exemplary. And we're still waiting on the terms of a possible lottery situation for next year, um, from the state, so we haven't. They, they're going back. They, they're going back and forth.
I've been asked about Manchester enrollment to the.
Yeah, 530 in this class.
In the freshman class. That's the biggest class ever.
That's a lot of kids.
Yeah, how many kids, how many towns and communities is Essex?
Seven, well, 17 member districts and then, but it's really like 53 altogether.
And how many Manchester Essex kids are in that class?
I don't know. We don't, I haven't got the numbers yet, so they won't give me that for another.
Something to get on that question.
Last week in October.
Starting to percolate as to what the status.
Right, so we're holding pattern right now. There's too many questions and no answers.
The school committee is waiting now and the finance committee hasn't got itself organized yet, but I did go to a board health meeting where they approved a shared septic system for a house that's at the end, toward the end of Harbor Street where there's a house and a, and a carriage house. And the carriage house has been used for storage. They want to turn it into an actual house that doesn't have any land. They eventually decided that they could share the septic system with the main house, which is large enough, has enough capacity. So a little more housing without the town actually doing anything other than approving the septic system. I guess there are probably other things that need to be. I think they've got planning board approval, but there's undoubtedly something else that they need approval for. And the gates have got another 30 days. They, there was an interior inspection as people had speculated there's effort at supporting and they, their lawyer is making a strong interest in, in moving things along, but didn't have, he didn't know of a moving company that came in and cleaned out years of, of the junk.
I've seen the commercials. Point, and it all goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, anyway, I don't, it's unlikely that the gate gates will have completed everything on the inspection report in 30 days. On the other hand, as long as they continue to make.
They're moving. I drive by there frequently. I saw a dumpster out there last week, which I was surprised. I didn't think there'd be a lot of dumpsters on the street, but I can't accept that. But there was activity. I saw some new siding that go up, so I definitely think there's repairs being made to what extent.
Yeah, looks like they're moving along.
Yeah. So I, I think as long as they continue to make progress.
When is our town, when is the town's next visual inspection planned?
I don't know if there is another visual inspection plan.
I think that the.
Right now they were just getting updates on a weekly basis.
Yep.
From the owners of the property.
I had forgotten when their, their next meeting is, but it's in the third meeting zone.
We should have some evidence though, because like I said, you can only see certain things from the outside, right?
And that's, that for me. Do I have? Okay. I think, I move that the, going on the consent agenda, I move that the select board approves the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
I'm going to abstain.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I have, yeah, you ready? I move that the select board approve the special event permit for the Manchester Essex Rotary for Singing Beach on September 13th, 2025 with a rain date of September 14th, 2025, with the condition to contact the Board of Health for any necessary permits they require.
Second. Okay, John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Abstain.
Yes.
Okay. Administrazione.
All right, so first just a quick update on trash. We are still only receiving curbside collection for trash and not receiving curbside collection for recycling. Chuck and I have a call with Dan, which is the, this region's director, who's been on a lot of the municipal calls that I've been on, but this is going to be more of a direct conversation. We, we have noticed that there are other communities that are receiving some sort of recycling collection. And Beverly, Beverly received a permit from DEP that allowed recycling and trash to be mixed, so they're able to do it all together. Ipswich, I think, is receiving some curbside collection, but it's unclear really, you know, how consistent that is and what their ability is to provide some collection for us. You know, a lot of the communities that are getting that service don't have a transfer station and are experiencing more impact than, than we are. So we're, you know, continuing to encourage our residents to use the transfer station. It continues to be open on extended hours, but we are trying to receive some sort of curbside collection for recycling, even if it's in a one every couple of week type schedule. We are not pleased with the services that we're receiving from Republic at the moment. It's been two months, you know, that they've been in this strike and leading up to July 1st, back in June, they told every, I mean, you know, all of the 14 municipalities that we, that we would not experience any interruption in service and they were planning, you know, to have supplementary service install or staff to, to install that. They've obviously dealt with a lot of delays because of the strike, because of activities of the strike or delaying the efficiency of their collection, but we want to speak, you know, directly to them about the needs here in Manchester. We also want to talk to them about the, they owe us a bill for July. They've talked about reducing the bill to eliminate the cost of recycle, curbside collection costs that didn't occur, but I think it goes a little bit beyond that and we want to have a discussion about that as well. Supposedly on the strike, they met with Teamsters on Thursday, but we haven't gotten an update on, on where that went. I believe they've involved a mediator, so we'll see, see what's happening there. Also, when I spoke with Andrew at Black Earth, he was, we've, we've had a lot of complaints about the queue, you know, when a lot of people, when a lot of the residents are going there, it could be improved. Also some complaints that there's, people have seen non-residents or people without stickers potentially dropping trash or recycling there. So stepping up enforcement, really need to have the resident sticker to be able to use a transfer station, so he's going to work on that as well.
It is, it is awkward going in there.
Very awkward, yeah.
And the compo side too is also, so it, it needs some fine tuning.
Yes. So he's, he's going to try, he's a couple of different ideas. He said he was going to try over the next two to three weeks. If, if we see an improvement, great. If not, we're going to get a little bit more involved in what that, the fine tuning of that setup. Gordon College, it was, there was an article in the Cricket regarding a meeting that the town had with Gordon College about a possible residential development on their property. A group of, you know, Manchester volunteers or appointed officials of different committees met with Gordon a week ago or so now, or two weeks ago now. It was the first time that this group has met with Gordon. It's very early in the process. There's still a lot of details and to be worked out. The, the exchange or the transaction of the property hasn't been finalized yet, but I will say that, you know, we are pleased that Gordon is inviting us into the room in the early phases of the, of the conversation. We'll be having some more internal conversations and conversations with Gordon about those details and, you know, want to, they, they are looking for our input. So that's, that's a good start to the process, but we want residents to know that we're very early in the, in the process and that we're going to continue to work with them and ensure that there is public communication around the project. Senior Center, I received a status update from Kinetic. This is the consultant that we hired to do a fundraising feasibility study. They found, they got excellent results. They had over 124 responses, which includes 30 plus interviews and 90 plus survey responses. They believe that our fundraising could be accomplished in a 12-month period. Also Chuck and Nate and I toured the Mason's Building last week, so it was good to get in there and see the layout of the existing facility. We're working with the Masons to make progress on the condo docks. We want to get those condo docks accomplished as soon as possible so that the fundraising campaign can start shortly thereafter. And then I'll be meeting with the Council on Aging Board on the 10th. I've met with the friends a few times, with John, I've been trying to speak with some other communities who have a senior center about the job description of their COA director. So, and, and my next step is to get input from the COA board. So I really want to get input from the board before we put that job description out. It's important that we update that to include the future, you know, vision of the, of the Council on Aging, you know, and the senior center and whatever type of programming that might be included with that. We have a touch a truck event on Saturday, September 20th from 11:00 to 12:30 here in the Town Hall parking lot. Also, the Board of Health has their annual flu clinic on Wednesday, September 24th from 9:00 AM to noon at the American Legion Hall. Registration can be done online. Also, if you have any issues with registering online, you can call the Town Hall, speak to either Council on Aging or if you need a high dose, or the Board of Health will help register residents for the clinic. For the Fire Department, we have, our ladder truck is back in service after some necessary repairs. And also the Fire Department and the Police Department hosted a school slush event last week on the 28th, which was very well attended. Kathy spoke about the Facility Planning Committee already. On Monday, the 25th, Bull Chiefs and I went over to Essex for a, an event with Congressman Moulton to talk about the importance of federal funding for preparing for potential natural Also, we, last week, members of the Affordable Housing Trust, Mark Resnick and I, met with Senator Tar and Secretary Augustus of Executive Offices of Housing and Livable Communities to talk about the Powderhouse property and how to, what our next steps are in order to get those properties included in the SHI. We also talked a lot about the need for assistance financially or technical assistance with our housing authority. And their, the secretary spoke to us at length about a lot of the new programs and funding opportunities that, that the state has put forward. So we will, the Affordable Housing Trust will try to work with the housing authority to educate them on, you know, what those options are. And a lot of them are specific to improving existing facilities and finding partners to help with that process. On the 27th, Anne, John, Chief Fitzgerald and I went over to Carolyn Anderson's house to present her the Boston Post cane, cane at 99, 99 years old. She's the second woman to receive the cane. She was extremely excited to have us there. She was, you know, smiling, laughing, exchanging stories. It was a really cool event and I think she really appreciated that. And then we talked about CADA, but, so I'll skip that. And municipal aggregation. Tiffany and I met with Colonial Power. Our municipal aggregation plan has been approved by the state, so now we're talking about what the next steps are as far as, you know, seeking or soliciting, pricing, executing a contract and then rolling that out to the resident. I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Hopefully Colonial Power can be here. Couple of things for us to think about. One is they're soliciting indicative pricing now. When we go to executable pricing, when they get that pricing, it's a very quick turnaround because it changes so quickly. So we'll need the board to authorize myself to be able to execute that contract in a quick fashion when we get that price. When you go, when you roll out municipal aggregation, typically towns will present to their residents a default plan, a, and then two other optional plans and an opt-out option. Some towns, the default plan would be either the least expensive supply of energy. Some towns would have the default plan be a mix of some clean energy and some not, and then some will use the default plan to be the most clean supply option. It also happens to be the most expensive. And then your residents have the choice of either do nothing and get the default plan or switch to one of the other options or opt out completely and just stay with National Grid. In my opinion, if, if, or unsolicited recommendation, I think that the default should be the cheapest option.
Yeah.
And you give residents the option to pay more for cleaner energy.
I agree.
Yeah. So.
Aging population.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's, you know, it's important to promote the opportunity to pay for cleaner energy, but I think it shouldn't be the default.
Right.
So that's, that's my, my report. I was going to do a two-week look ahead, but given the time, I'll, I'll wrap it up there. I can always do a recap at the next.
I move to adjourn. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All of labor.
All right.
Good.